All right, everybody. Welcome to the February 2nd Regular Planning Commission Hearing. I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Ariana, report on posting the agenda and roll call, please.
The agenda was posted on Friday, January 27th, 2023 at 5:27 PM. Roll call. Commissioner Ellie.
Present.
Commissioner Kushner. Commissioner Leonard.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Montez.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez. And Chair Bondal.
Here. Thank you very much. Any public comments on matters not on today's agenda?
There are no public comments at this time.
All right. We move to close the public comment section. Report on the consent agenda. Commissioners, any questions on the January 19th, 2023 meeting minutes? I'll move to accept and approve.
I second.
Commissioner Montez is waiting for you.
Mine is not there. It should come up.
Can you go ahead and refresh the screen, please?
Please be patient with us today. We're working with a new system.
It's coming.
Very good. Thank you. That passes.
You should announce the vote.
Okay. It passes seven zero unanimous point. All right. Moving on to public hearing 6.1. Continued items. Electronic billboard ordinance for application Z 18 dash 04. Cindy with staff report.
Good evening. And thank you for everyone in the audience for being here this evening. And this is a continuance of our January 19th public hearing for the electronic billboard ordinance and SEQA document. I want to reemphasize that we are not considering the sign application at this time. So just in summary, our current regulations prohibit off-site advertising signs, including billboards, and lighted signs that flash on and off, and signs that utilize scrolling or moving text or image. We also have regulations for freeway-oriented signs and regional-serving commercial signs. The applicant is proposing modifications to our current zoning regulations to allow electronic billboards in the city of Gilroy, and that would require modifications to these three sections of current code and also the creation of a new ordinance, which would establish permit requirements, a development agreement requirement, and operational standards, including light intensity. The city hired a third-party environmental consultant with direct billboard experience and technical expertise, and she is here this evening and will provide a brief presentation. I wanted to bring you up to date on the public comments. So between the last meeting and tonight, we received an additional 25 individual organizational comments for a total of 60, with 55 opposed. That's 93%, and five in support. And it's pretty similar comments that we reviewed last time, and those are listed here. I also wanted to mention the community meeting that was held on October 25th because that came up at the last meeting. So we had comments from Dr. Paul Lineman, Mr. John Miller, Mr. Jason Hemp, and questions in the comment, the chat box. And so those comments are listed here, asking why the city is doing this, how many signs would be in the city, making comments such as the sign will change the community character, the city could be sued, people don't want these advertisements, and so on. Those are all here. So between when the packet was published on Friday and tonight, we've received additional comments, and that's included within that 60. And if you would like to see those comments, they are in the public portal. So you can scan this and see those public comments. With that, staff is recommending approval of the project, including the ordinance and the SEQA document. Alternatively, the planning commission could deny the application. I'm going to go through the different types of denial. Or the planning commission could make, recommend, could recommend modifications. So for example, eliminating the operational hours at nighttime. If the project is denied or modified, the applicant can appeal that decision. And even though the planning commission can deny the project without any discussion at all, I would recommend that you do provide comments because it will help strengthen your recommendation and also support the council when they review this project. And with that being said, based on your comments at the last meeting, I have drafted findings for denial. So I want to go over the two denial options. So you have the straight denial, and that essentially means with prejudice. So that means that the applicant could not reapply for a one-year period. If the planning commission denies without prejudice, that means that the, the planning, the applicant could come back with a modified application within that one year. So I want to turn it over to our SEQA consultant to provide a brief presentation. So I'm just going to change slides here. Yes.
If you can go back to your screen about the denials. It said that. Okay. So without prejudice, the applicant can modify and come back within a year. What about, where does that appeal process come in here? Within the 20 days?
So the, the city council is the final decision maker. So if the, if the applicant, if the planning commission denies the application with or without prejudice, the applicant can appeal that decision, and the city council would be the final decision maker. It just, when you make that decision, you're just making, you're just providing the council with additional information to consider when they, if they get an appeal.
And I have a question, too. This one-year waiting period, who determines that? Is that our legislation said if something gets denied, it has to wait for a year before they reapply?
So it's section 30.52.80 that talks about reapplication depending on the type of denial. Okay. Any other questions for me? All right.
Good evening. Chair, planning commissioners, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Sue Lee. I'm with First Carbon Solutions. We are an independent SEQA consultant retained by the city to prepare SEQA review for this proposed billboard ordinance. I appreciate the opportunity to prepare a presentation that goes over the SEQA process and how we analyze impacts to determine whether an impact is considered significant or less than. So when we do our SEQA documentation, our first step is the initial study. It's a checklist with 20 or so resource areas that we have to analyze. And it's from, it's based off the SEQA Guidelines Appendix G checklist questions as amended by the city of Gilroy. And whether we're doing an ISMD or an EIR, we analyze the same questions. So when we prepare the initial study, if we determine that there is no impact or very little impact, we would then prepare a negative declaration, an ND. Or if there are potentially significant impacts that could be mitigated to less-than-significant levels, then we prepare a mitigated negative declaration, MND, which is an ISMD, which is what we prepared for this project here. And preparation of an EIR is triggered when the lead agency, in this case, the city, is presented with substantial evidence that the project would have significant impact on the environment that cannot be reduced with design features, existing regulations, conditions of approval, or mitigation. And one thing to note here to maybe help clear up some misconception, even when we prepare, when we maybe are prepared to do an ISMD, if we're tasked to do it, scoped to do an ISMD, it doesn't mean that an ISMD is all we get, is the only outcome. It is common when we do the initial study, thinking that it will be an MND, we discover significant impacts that can't be mitigated, and then we immediately raise to the city. And then we pivot to preparing an EIR. So it's, so even if we are initially going the route of MND, we can always pivot to an EIR. So it's the notion that if we're tasked to do an MND, then that's all we get is, is not the case here. But in this case, we prepared an initial study, and then we determined that our impacts could be reduced to less-than-significant levels, and then we prepared an MND. And then here is just a table of all the resource areas that we analyzed. There are about 20 of them, and each resource area, there are three to six questions to each resource area that we have to answer. For this project particularly, the potentially significant impacts that were later reduced to less-than-significant with mitigation measures is aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, tribal cultural resources, and mandatory findings. Mandatory findings is usually always checked if there are any mitigation measures. And we sometimes hear comments about, for this project, for instance, that it will be very bright, it will be very distracting, and these are very valid concerns. But they also can be subjective. But SEQA requires that we prepare an objective analysis. And how do we do that? I would like to highlight two main points. The first is that we have to analyze the baseline condition, which is what's currently out there. Is, is it a, you know, pitch-black environment? Or is it an environment with a lot of existing light sources from industrial uses or from cars on Highway 101? And, you know, is it a pristine environment that we're analyzing? Or is it an urbanized area with, you know, industrial uses again and the highway? And how we analyze is, you know, the baseline is here. We determine the baseline is here, and the change into the environment due to the project is here. It's what we consider to be the project's environmental impact. So that's one way I would like, one point I would like to point out. And the second point is that in order to determine whether an impact is significant is we measure it against objective thresholds. Usually that means existing regulations that are already in place that govern those aspects of the project. You know, and those regulations are designed to safeguard human health and safety. And if the project is compliant with those regulations and standards, that means effects will be determined to be less-than-significant. And impacts that are consistent or less-than-thresholds will be determined to be less-than-significant. And just like for this, one example is for this billboard ordinance. We're establishing parameters for, you know, future billboards that need to abide by. So in that case, we're setting standards for future billboards to measure against. You know, if they're compliant with all the parameters set forth in that ordinance, then, you know, it would be considered consistent in that regard. And on the note of objectivity, I just want to highlight that we really focus on using objective sources and government sources. And we don't, you know, we really only use those sources. And one example is that for, there's one study that we use that analyzes driver visual behaviors in the presence of electronic billboards, and that was prepared by the U.S. Department of Transportation. And for our final slide, I just want to quickly highlight the public disclosure and put requirements under SEQA. So the city complied with all of the requirements under SEQA for public disclosure in order to ensure meaningful public participation. So the public review period for the draft ISMD began in August 2022 and ended in September. That lasted 30 days pursuant to SEQA guidelines. And the draft ISMD was available for review in the city's planning website, in the planning commission, in the, I mean, sorry, planning division office, and city public library. And also the notice of intent to adopt, which is a notice that basically says, oh, the city prepared this draft ISMD to analyze impacts. It's ready for public review, and it will, public review will last for 30 days. Here's where you can access the, the document. And that notice to intend to adopt was advertised on the Gilroy dispatch and also mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the billboard location. And although SEQA doesn't require written comments to public, written responses to public comments on MNDs, and it's only a requirement for EIRs, the city has elected to prepare a final ISMD with responses to those public comments received during the public comment period. And none of the comments received resulted in the need to recirculate the draft ISMD or to prepare an EIR. And lastly, I also wanted to note that First Carbon reviewed all the public letters received prior to the first planning commission meeting, and then the second, and then this one. And we also concluded that there are no new information raised that would change the findings in the draft and final ISMD. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions for Cindy or the SEQA consultant? I'd like to start off with a question. For this project specifically, could you give us an example of a trigger of an EIR? What would trigger, what would be the threshold of anything that would trigger?
Yeah. So there is, there are existing standards and regulations for less-than-dull time, which is how long the image in the electronic billboard has to stay before switching to the next image. The minimum standard is four seconds. What's proposed is eight seconds. And if it wasn't compliant, or, you know, a significant impact would be if they're proposing less than four seconds.
Thank you.
Yes. I have a question. I have a couple of questions, actually. So I understand that this report is identified as objective, but I do have a concern about that because it says right on your website that the experts at First Carbon Solutions will move your project forward so that you can focus on what matters. To me, comments like that are not objective. Right?
Well, we work with, we contract with the city, and then we, you know, work with the city often, too, and we come up with the best SEQA approach that is defensible and will also, you know, meet project objectives. And we, we do, we try to, you know, come up with best solutions while being legally defensible.
I just feel that if something is objective, it is, it would not finish with the comment of that will move your project forward. Right? Also, too, looking at that study supplied by the government in 2012, there is a lot of criticism towards that study. I also have noticed that it's been used by First Carbon in three other documents for other cities, almost cookie cutter. And that, that study's pretty old, 2012. But some of the critique that we see with that document online, when we read it, you know, I went and I found it and I read it, and it was included. So I appreciate that. But that the equipment was unproven. Research weren't, researchers weren't experienced with the equipment. The data suffered as a result of this. The billboards that were studied were less bright than other billboards, other, other where, and other areas. The number of billboards that were studied were eight. So that's a very small sample. And four of them were static. Four of them were digital. Oh, sorry. My apologies. Eight in two cities, so a total of 16 signs. There were unexplained differences between eye glance duration reported in the draft report, and one peer reviewer called those not credible. And that in the final report, they were seeing other significant unexplained differences between the draft report and the released reports. That's, those are the two reports between 2010 and 2013. So, you know, it just feels like this report, I mean, science is really good at putting out documents and data, but they're not great at identifying and pulling them back. I have my degree in psychology. There's a lot of old science out there that's not valid, and we still keep quoting it. And I, it's the same in other industries. So we're not good at identifying and pulling back data that is suspect. I just see that this is being used, this study is being used a lot, and there is a lot of criticism towards it. And I think that we, we could do better. Thank you. If you, if, actually, if you could address, sorry, the question was, can you address the concerns about that study? Is that nothing else was, no other experts were brought into this study that we received? We had to hear it from the community, and we had to hear those experts in the field actually come down to speak with us live.
Yeah. And, and then, again, we use objective that we view as the most objective, and that's why we rely on government sources, and that's one reason why we rely on that because it's the most objective we can find versus, you know, other, from other scientific database that, you know, may or may not be biased. And I think all reports can be reviewed, and they can be peer-reviewed, and there could be different opinions that stem from it. But we still rely, try to rely on the most objective source that we could find, and which is why we fall back on government sources. And there are different studies that were brought up in the comment period, and they're not, and we think that they're not directly applicable to our project site because their study area is vastly different than ours. And then in, versus in the Department of Transportation, let, study, that study area to us seems very applicable versus studying, you know, another pristine, studying a pristine area where, you know, has really no relation to what we're looking at at hand.
I have a question. You would use the word objective a lot. But when, when you were talking about working with the city, it sounded like you were heading into the project already knowing that you wanted a certain outcome, which is in support of, you know, a yes vote, basically. And so my question is, you know, this implies bias right from the get-go that this is what the desired outcome is. And then you're looking at your material, basically, to support all that. I'm kind of concur that it would be nice to see the actual experts in the field at least mentioned and brought up instead of discounting them that they're not the most objective standards, you know. It doesn't feel very objective and unbiased to me.
And I guess just to, just to your point that when we work with the city, there is, you know, our goal is to approve the project. Well, whether, whether we, there is impact or no impact, we still put forth a public disclosure document, which is SEQA. Even if the project would result in significant impact, we would still put forth a SEQA document, and in that case, it would be an EIR.
You mentioned that you, you work with the government, and you talk about compliance. But the city rules are our government. And it doesn't comply, this, whatever you are proposing, you guys are proposing, doesn't comply with the city, with the, with the city's regulation. So that is, again, as they said, it's like, I have a very, I have a different understanding about, like, how biased that is because you talk about compliance, but that's, you know, it's not, doesn't comply with our rules.
Yeah. So I think you were talking to the point that the proposed billboard, there's a, you know, we're putting forth, or the city is putting forth a proposed billboard ordinance, but the existing zoning does not allow electronic billboard.
The city is not proposing. That is, this is a, like a, like a business, business owner is proposing. And, you know.
Yeah. That was a big, it was a bone of contention that, that it felt like there's, there's an applicant that wants to have something changed, and that the city is now recommending it. And that was one of the questions we were having. Why is it being proposed when there's an existing ordinance that prohibits it? I know this is not really a question for you.
Could I respond briefly? From a legal standpoint, the city has an ordinance that effectively bans these kind of billboards. The applicant is seeking a change in that ordinance that would legalize them. So the, his application is necessarily inconsistent with the existing ordinance because he's trying to change it. The, the job of the SEQA writer is to analyze whether or not there are significant environmental impacts caused by the change, not to recommend that the change be done or not done, but to analyze. And if there are potentially significant impacts, then to recommend mitigations. And they undertake the job, I think, in the initial expectation, going back to the question to earlier, that this is most likely not going to require an EIR. But I think, as the consultant said, we have had occasions where once an applicant, once a consultant digs into the environmental process, they find out there's a real problem. That's something that can't be mitigated, and then the project has to shift from a negative declaration potentially to an EIR. And we have done that on other projects from time to time. It does happen. So the fact that this project started out in the expectation that it would be a mitigated negative declaration does not indicate bias on the part of the consultant. It indicates an expectation that that's the likely requirement going to be. Then the consultant does their work. In this case, they concluded that, yes, that that is appropriate and that the environmental impacts that could potentially occur could be mitigated. This is in front of you to agree or not agree, but that's the basis of their doing the document. I just wanted to say it does not indicate a bias on the part of the consultant that they start out doing a negative declaration and end up doing it. In fact, that's probably what happens 99% of the time, but sometimes it doesn't.
You said also that you guys analyze cultural resources. So what finds did you have regarding to that in our city?
Yeah. So how we prepare our cultural resources analysis is that we put in record searches to the cultural databases to see what are the recorded cultural resources that are in the area? How close is it to the project site? And then we go out, we, we have a professional archaeologist who goes out to do a survey, a site survey, to look at the environment, you know, how built-out is it? And then we make the analysis, how likely is it to encounter or affect any cultural or historic resources? And then we put forth mitigation measures. And then we put forth mitigation measures.
Did you guys have that expert doing that?
Yes, yes.
On the field?
Yes.
And what was the result for the report?
Yeah, the result was that there are resources nearby, but nearby isn't in the vicinity, and then our search is a 0.5 mile radius. And that, but due to the condition of the site, which is, you know, disturbed and then already paved, and with, you know, current uses on the site, we think that the likelihood to encounter resources would not be, would be unlikely. However, we always err on the side of caution because we can never rule out the possibility. So we put forth mitigation measures to make sure that during construction, if in the unlikely event that resources are encountered, there are measures put forth for, to, to make sure those resources are not affected.
It's very unclear to me, resources and measures, but specifically, what are you talking about? Which resources you encounter there? And which measures are recommended?
Yes, so you were saying you would like examples of cultural resources?
Specifically, the one that was done in our city, yes. Basically, the results, like, because resources, this is very general, like, oh, we had resources and like, okay, which resources, what did you encounter?
Yeah.
What are the results?
Right, so in this case, it's that during the walk, walk survey, we didn't encounter any cultural resources, because if there were any onsite, that would be an impact that we need to mitigate. But then our finding is that we didn't encounter any resources, of course, onsite, but we can never rule out anything that's underneath while we're doing construction, and that's why we put forth mitigation measures for construction impacts and also, like, inadvertent discoveries, you know, if during construction there are resources unearthed, you know, what should they do to make sure those resources are not affected?
I have a question, just a clarification. My understanding, two weeks ago, when we talked about the cost of the CEQA study, was that the applicant had paid for this study? And then I thought I heard tonight that the city paid for it.
We contract with the city, and like with all applications, I think the applicant ultimately pays for staff time and other application fees, including preparation of CEQA, but we contract with the city, so the city is our client.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any more questions? For Cindy? No? All right, I see no more questions, I'm gonna open up to public comment. Or is there any, well, I do see nine here, or is it? Ten?
Yes, we have ten public comments.
All right.
For the record, I guess you're opening the public hearing.
Sorry, public hearing. Just want to let the public speakers to know that it's limited to three minutes.
The first speaker is Robert Weaver.
It seems like we've been here before, but it is Groundhog Day, so there you go. I want to start off with where I left off in my second letter, with cui bono, Latin for who benefits. I've looked at this, and there are speculative benefits to the people of Gilroy and the small businesses, and then there are absolute benefits to the people putting forth this proposition and to the person on whose property the sign will be erected. And that person, as far as I can tell, is the only person in Gilroy who's gonna make money on this, because the sign is on their property. If you ever have a chance to go to the League of California Cities, please do, you will learn a lot. And one of the things you will learn is that local businesses, the money stays local. Large businesses, dealerships, big box stores, it goes to corporate, which is out of the area. So who can afford to stay here and advertise? It's the big box stores, excuse me, and the corporate. And their money, if they get money from the sign, will go out of the area. Please think again when you think, who benefits? Very little benefit will probably come to the merchants of Gilroy who live here and have businesses here. Most of it, if it does happen, will go out of the area to corporate offices. So please think about that, and I hope that you'll do the right thing tonight. And please, if you have the opportunity, and I know you will, go to the League of California Cities meetings and learn as much as you can, it's beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie Rogers.
I've already submitted two comment letters, so I'll try to say something a little different tonight. You've been given a very voluminous packet of information, but to me, the most important information about exactly what kind of mitigations there will be and how they will be applied is not included in your packet. And I submit that the devil is in the details. Some of the mitigations appear to apply just to the six acre site where the billboard and the sign will be located. But the effect of this sign will cover a much larger range, and I think the consultant just illustrated that. I wouldn't expect to find Indian artifacts on the site, but it certainly will be visible from the Sergeant Ranch, which is claimed by the Alamoutsan Indians. You also don't have information about what percentage of time or space or cost there will be for local businesses to have ads. What local businesses will be able to afford this type of advertising besides the auto dealers? Commissioner Lewis raised a very valid point last time. In other cities, most of the ads are for national products, such as McDonald's, Citibank, Verizon, Coca-Cola, et cetera. Also, if you go to Google Street View, you can see similar giant billboards along 101 in Santa Clara, although they are much shorter, and they are ugly. Our gateway should not look like that. The city council has emphasized tourism as our goal, and I believe Visit Gilroy has done a great job, you know, using that on their website. But we have an image of being rural and peaceful. And I also want to show you, this is the latest issue of VIA Magazine, the AAA magazine, talks about dark skies being destination points. So my last point is that other cities, many other cities either don't allow these billboards in the first place, or they're trying to phase out pre-existing ones. So it's much easier to not permit them in the first place. So I ask you not to approve the MND. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Paul Lyman.
Evening again, good to see you all here. The report that you've heard is not a villain, and Cindy is not a villain, and the consultant is not a villain. In my view, the villain in this is CEQA, is being insufficient and deficient in quantifying the effect and how you categorize an environment. I didn't need to submit another letter to you in the intervening two weeks, but I am going to refer you back to my 18th of January letter, where I warned you about the public health crisis, about hormonal cancers from new results. If that doesn't scare you enough, a new report, a new study came out at the end of 2022, not only talking about cancers, but talking about something called MCI, which is mild cognitive impairment. The recommendation from this study, policymakers should take effective measures to curb the surging light pollution at night. For those who don't know, mild cognitive impairment is a proxy for the onset of dementia. So as I said before, there are many diseases, human health consequences, all connected to the prevalence of light pollution. I had a query within the past two weeks, talking about the 250-foot distance, even direct viewing, this neglecting the scattered light arguments that I've made in written submissions. A member of the public contacted me and was curious, how far can these type of billboards be viewed even with direct viewing? So at the observatory on top of Mount Hamilton, we are partially obscured from Milpitas, which is known as a, as a very strong light polluter, but we don't see the direct lights. However, there's a cluster of billboards in, along 101 on the northeast side that is visible with the naked eye. One of them is a church, one of them is owned by Clear Channel, one of them is owned by Outfor Media. These are easily visible to the naked eye from Mount Hamilton, we've seen them changing at night, the distance, 17.5 miles to the midpoint between those two billboards from the observatory. I don't know whether the billboard that we're talking about, with these electronic billboards in Santa Clara, are of the same technology that I proposed in this report, but that one I'm talking about was introduced somewhere between May 2016 and May 2017. I'm not sure if LED technology has improved since then, but probably the mechanical loovering probably hasn't. And a date for your diary, I've been authorized to extend an invitation to the city and the councillors and the people interested in campaigning. We are scheduling a visit to Mount Hamilton for you guys for the 22nd of April, where you can come up on a dark, moonless night and inspect the light pollution of the Santa Clara Valley for yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Michelle Nelson.
My name is Michelle Nelson, and I've been a resident of Gilroy for 43 years. I have a few questions and comments regarding the item up for consideration tonight. As a matter of course, I'm opposed to all billboards. I believe they detract from the natural landscape to the point where they can be considered blight. States that rely on tourism, such as Vermont and Hawaii, don't allow them at all for good reason. People don't visit those states for the beauty of advertisements. I also believe that billboards do cause distraction in drivers. We already have enough of an issue with distracted driving with cell phones, and I believe that an extra second or two, when drivers take their eyes off the road to read an advertisement, is not in the best interest of public safety. And proposed billboards will have up to eight different advertisements. There was a question last time as to what kinds of companies would take advantage of the billboards. Are we advertising for Gilroy shops or Pepsi? The city would have absolutely no say in the matter. And if this sign is mostly for the auto dealerships, I can't imagine people driving through Gilroy from out of town would take the time to pull off of 101 and go visit the parking lots of the various car dealerships. I imagine they're just trying to reach their destinations as quickly as possible, and people who live in the area already know about the Gilroy dealerships, drive a little, save a lot. One commissioner at the last meeting asked if you could take a field trip to see one of these signs in action, was that done? Another question was if Gilroy could check with some other cities to get feedback, was that done? With respect to feedback from the public at the last meeting, there were 34 comments that had been submitted, of which 31 were opposed and only three were in favor. Understand, tonight, 60 have now been received, but 55 are in opposition. The applicant mentioned at the last meeting that some of the comments were submitted by people outside of Gilroy, that's one reason why I'm here tonight, I live here. I believe that if there were more community involvement in this decision, the majority of people who live here would oppose the billboard, and the comments so far lend credence to that. Yes, there was a meeting, but I understand that there were only 10 people in attendance. Neither of these numbers is a good sample size from which to reach a decision. I would also like to remind you that three professional organizations, the Audubon Society, Sierra Club, and Lake Observatory, provide reasons for denying a change. There is evidence that artificial light at night does disturb wildlife and even human circadian rhythms. If you've been abroad, you'll know what I'm talking about, or way up north or way down south. We should be doing everything we can to reduce light pollution, not increase it. Finally, one commissioner referred to Gilroy's 2040 Plan, which states in part that the city will support growth and development that preserves and strengthens the city's historic small-town character and creates beautiful spaces. Placing a huge billboard at the southern gateway does not preserve that character nor does it create anything beautiful. I ask you to vote no to any change in the current regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny Mitchell.
Hi, I'm Danny Mitchell, I'm a longtime Gilroy resident, retired CPA CFO of a local manufacturing company. Commissioner Bendel and the Westover Group, I do want to address and support the consideration for this sign. So much we're hearing in regard to the opposition and the sign itself, I would like you to maybe overly consider the benefit that this sign will serve to our business community. The idea that the sign will not generate traffic for our local mom and pops, we find that the traffic will generate traffic to and by those smaller businesses, and hopefully the peripheral traffic will support those small businesses that really can't afford to advertise on this sign. The idea that the opponents have focused on, you know, the downside of having this gaudy-looking sign out there, when we should look at a lot of what we've done in this community to, to, you know, try to support and encourage development of our small business. I want to address Kelly's concern at the last meeting regarding not having heard from the Downtown Business Association, the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce, and Visit Gilroy. As you all know, all of those bodies have changed their leaders in this last couple of months. The meetings that they would hold to discuss this have not taken place. As a member and a past chair of the Gilroy Chamber of Commerce, I'm only speaking for myself, but I know these, these issues will be addressed at some point. Typically, the chamber would address these once it was passed from a body like this to, to the city council, and we would have collective say-so in those groups. I'm not speaking for the entire group tonight, I'm just speaking for myself. I also sit on the board of the Downtown Business Association and the Economic Development Group, and they too will have a position on this. Unfortunately, it may not be till, if it gets approved, till it gets to city council. So we're encouraging you to at least pass this ordinance, so that it can go to the city council, and we'll see how supportive the business groups and community of Gilroy will come out in support of this, in support of this request for ordinance change. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Jeff Orth.
Hello, my name is Jeff Orth, I'm the chairman of the board of the Downtown Business Association. I became aware of the sign ordinance thing when I returned from a trip skiing with my three-and-a-half-year-old grandson, so I immediately went out and started polling the, my 13 board members and the Down community at large. And although it was a rather small polling sample, I had roughly 60% that were in favor of moving forward with the sign, 40% were against. I want to say there simply was not a lack of, there was a lack of time for doing a significant polling sample, but I will say, since I reported these numbers on the Saturday retreat that the council had, we've had a couple more yeses, we've had no more nos, so it looks like things are building toward, more towards yes. And because it's close and because I have a chance to actually have a meeting, as Danny Mitchell mentioned, I don't feel that it's, would be pertinent for it to take a position until after that meeting. Now, as a personal note, I'm going to tell you that as a business owner, I'd say I'm in favor of the sign, because I believe it certainly would drive business to Gilroy, even for those who are unwilling or unable to afford the sign time. And it would bring revenue to the city of Gilroy at no cost. I think that there's, might be an opportunity here to provide public access time for nonprofit pro-business organizations, such as such as the Chamber of Commerce, where they could promote their car show. Or for the Downtown Business Association, we could promote our summer concert series. And for the city to just say their national night out, they could promote their national night out. Also, this sign would have a very useful social function in being able to provide amber alerts and emergency messaging in a very quick, consistent way. So for these reasons, I think that it's important to at least advance this to the City Council so we can have further discussion and make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Miller.
Good evening. I'm John Miller. I'm a volunteer with No Digital Billboards in San Jose. And I'm here tonight to express my concern about the proposal to erect a 75-foot-high billboard in Gilroy. You know, that's the equivalent of a six- or seven-story building. And anyone who feels there will be no impact on the landscape as a result of this can't really be taken seriously. It will dominate the landscape. It will cause you who live here to look at your community in a different way. And it will cause potential visitors to Gilroy to look at Gilroy in a different way. What they will see is that Gilroy looks like anyplace USA. But the proponents of this proposal say it's worth it because it can boost the local economy. There is no guarantee absolutely that the auto dealers or any other local business will be able to advertise on this billboard. Billboard companies like to cut deals with national advertisers, and that's what's likely to happen in this case. What is guaranteed is that this will endanger Gilroy's quality of life, upon which your growing tourism industry depends. So if you believe, if you believe digital billboards will generate revenue that will trickle down to the community, you're believing urban legends and billboard industry talking points. I say, let's see the evidence, let's see the data, let's see the social science in support of the proponents of this proposal and the claims they are making. Otherwise, you're forming public policy based on billboard marketing hype. Now, I know the proponents of this proposal are going to say they have this secret document. That is the get-out-of-jail-free card they have. But I do not think that's a valid instrument to measure the impacts of this proposed billboard on Gilroy. For instance, the secret document dismisses economic impacts. It dismisses social impacts. It dismisses the very real probability that a billboard company is going to sue this city as a cost of doing business. It dismisses the impact on Lick Observatory. It dismisses individual taxpayers' concerns about hidden costs in this project that we don't frankly have time to discuss tonight. So I would feel you Commissioners want the residents of this community to be able to have their concerns and questions addressed. But this document, this process, just dismisses their concerns. And in that regard, I think it's illegitimate. And I would advise you to reject this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jason Heep.
Erissa, before the next speaker, can you just make sure that the timer is working up there?
It's queued on our screen, but...
Yeah, I see it here.
Yeah, I'm not too sure.
Okay, I'll just watch it.
Okay, sorry.
Good evening. My name's Jason Hamp. I'm a San Jose resident. I made all the way to check down here to be with you tonight. I'm also with the No Digital Billboards in San Jose group. And we're a bit familiar with this topic since it's been pretty active in San Jose for the last five years. I just would like to bring a few words of wisdom and a cautionary tale. I don't know if you know, but back in 2018, the city of San Jose repealed their sign ordinance ban and put forth proposals to put dozens of digital billboards around town, both along freeways and downtown. Then the pandemic hit, things slowed down. Then the community found out what was going on. And we stepped in and said, what's going on? You know, they claimed there was community outreach, but it was only for a select, limited number of people in the communities. What we found out was there was a lot of hype, but lacking data and facts behind what the benefits of these billboards would bring to the community. That was five years ago. There hasn't been a single billboard that's gone up yet, partly because of reprioritization in the city, but also some challenges. And in fact, there are two lawsuits right now with the city of San Jose against billboard companies. One is an illegal, a couple of billboards that are up. They're in the process of settling a lawsuit. But they've been up and running for three years. So if you open the floodgates to allow one or two billboards in your community, expect more to follow. There's a second lawsuit that's actually involving one of your applicants right now. Outfront Media has sued the city of San Jose and the San Jose Airport because they did a non-bidding agreement with another billboard company, Clear Channel. So that's mired in litigation right now. So just anticipate the consequences of allowing this in your community. I personally love the views of the Bay Area. I consider this my home, even though I'm a transplant. And I just hope that you consider the pros and cons of this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Les Levitt.
I'm also from the No Digital Billboards in San Jose group. And I got involved in this because, like you, I cared about my community. And it was a time when the city was proposing 100 digital billboards along the freeways in San Jose. That's since been tabled because the residents came forward to speak up. Many cities and even states banned billboards along highways based on the principle that beautification was good for economic development and good for the environment. Before all the environmental activism we see today, there was a movement in this country around highway beautification and taking down billboards. So the first thing I'd like to say is that all that still applies today. And more than ever, in the context of climate change, constructing electronic billboards that consume massive amounts of power just for the sake of advertising is seriously environmentally regressive. And then when you think about putting the city name on the top of that billboard, you're creating an association. And all the great work that has been done to create an image of what is unique about Gilroy can be overwhelmed. Billboards, as you've heard, typically advertise national brands most of the time, ads for beer, or cellphones, or possibly even political ads, which you will have no control over. This will be the new unavoidable welcome to Gilroy. Another thing you should try to understand is that once you open the gate to two billboards, expect more. Other billboard companies will be visiting. And if you only greenlight one company, the others will be ready to do whatever it takes to get their way to. The answer to avoiding litigation and tying up city resources is to simply not get involved in this at all. Billboards can be very distracting to city government. If you go Google billboard litigation, you will see the mess in many other cities that opened once the door was open to billboard companies. At minimum, I would appeal to you to defer any decision and continue to gather objective evidence and community input. Our group would be happy to provide documentation to support the public interest side of this issue. For example, in San Jose, when the planning department surveyed residents, 84% were strongly opposed to new billboards along freeways. 2,500 people responded to that. I would urge you to think deeply about your vision for your city...
Mr. Levitt, your time is up.
And how your decision impacts the broader community. Thanks.
Michelle Campbell.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michelle Campbell, and I have a business downtown, Michelle Campbell Insurance Services. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Downtown Business Association. And I just rolled off being on the Chamber Board for the last seven years. So pretty involved in our community. And I kind of found it surprising that I just learned about this electronic sign a few weeks ago. So I haven't had a chance to do my full research about a lot of the things I've heard tonight. And the same with, as you heard from Danny and Jeff, you know, we're all, we're trying to learn about this sign ordinance and the sign and the impacts. However, from the business perspective, I'm always looking for new marketing. I'm on a billboard on Santa Teresa. And I, you know, marketing and billboards is not about somebody driving by a sign and going, oh, I see Michelle Campbell Insurance, I'm going to turn around and drive over and get some insurance. It's about keep seeing people in the community, and that's what billboards are about. You keep seeing someone's name, and when the time comes and they need your service, they come to you. I advertise in a lot of different things. I'm a small business. And I know that there are other small businesses in downtown Gilroy that would take consideration of advertising on this billboard. We've met with the company, and I think our business associates would also like to learn more information. So I'm recommending that you push out this vote and let us gather some more information. I think we can get as many, if we're, if everyone thinks like I do, which I think a lot of my, you know, members of the board, they're business people too. They think very, we all think very similarly. I think they would also be for this also, but we just need a little more time. When Jeff made the phone calls to us, a lot of us just didn't have enough information. And the more I've learned about it, the more I am for it. The signs that were of the past are not like this sign. This is much newer technology. It's very modern-looking. And I think having the city of Gilroy on top of it is a chance to promote our message. I know a lot of people drive right through Gilroy, and what do they see? A bunch of blight and homeless people, you know, on the sides. Hey, let's let them look up and read something about us instead of looking off to the side and seeing tents. Let's do something about that. So I'm recommending that you push it out or vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
The last three public speakers we have is the applicant and his staff.
More than welcome.
Mike Conrato.
Excuse me, I have a question. Should, doesn't the applicant have a time to speak outside of public comment? That's not restricted by the three minutes?
Normally, the applicant goes first at a public hearing and then also gets a rebuttal. That didn't happen tonight. So I think the three-minute timing probably should not apply. Normally, they're given 10 minutes initially, then five in rebuttal. But I'm not sure how much they need here. But I think you're correct. The three minutes is probably not applicable.
And who is the official applicant?
Mr. Conrato is the applicant, as I understand it. And then Outfront Media is the company to which they're allied with, who I think we're regarding as kind of a co-applicant.
Mr. Conrato owns the property and Outfront Media...
Right. I just thought that, again, my apologies, I'm new. But my understanding was that that Mr. Conrato would apply if this passed through council.
No, Mr. Conrato actually asked the city to change the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Presumably, if the ordinance is adopted, then we assume there will be an application for a billboard on his property. But that hasn't occurred yet.
Okay.
Mr. Conrato, I'm sorry. One more question. I want to make sure you have your full speaking time, which is why I spoke up initially. But I want to be really clear about who is the applicant because I do not see Outfront Media as the applicant in my packet. Can we get confirmation on exactly who the applicant is?
Yeah, so Mr. Conrato applied for this ordinance change back in 2018. He did not, I was not aware of Outfront Media until about a year ago, when it went to the City Council. So Outfront Media came in at a later point, as far as I'm concerned. The applicant was Mr. Conrato.
Okay, so then for the record, the applicant is Mr. Conrato.
Correct.
Is that correct, counsel?
That's what I just said, yes.
Okay, well, you said co-applicant, so I'm just making clarification.
Well, let me explain. Mr. Conrato is the applicant. But because he is allied with a media company that in fact presumably wants to put a billboard on his property and has a lot of information, we have been treating them as though they are part of the application process, although they are technically not the applicant.
You're going to go, Mr. Conrato.
A little history then. The car dealers actually came to me because they couldn't agree on dividing the sign or the price of the sign they wanted to put up. They wanted to get this digital sign. That's how it got started. And then in turn, the Arrow Sign Group gave me a third party. You know, they wanted it on my property. That's how it started. Okay? Is there any questions on that?
Yeah, so it sounds like the car dealerships are paying for the sign?
No.
Okay, that's what it sounded like.
No, they were going to try to put a sign on their property, you know, the drive-around. But I'm sure trying to divide this $900,000 sign and who's going to be advertising and it was not a third-party sign. They came, they got the idea to put it right across the canal, which is on my property, so that they could buy what they wanted to buy on time and not have to divide it up or always be fighting over who's going to advertise when. Does that help a little bit? So that's how it got started. And in turn, when we applied in 18, which is almost going to be the second generation here pretty soon if we keep going here. But we're trying to get, there was an ordinance that these signs are not legal to put up in Gilroy. And that's what started it. And it went back to planning to do this study to find out about legalizing this application. It came up that they should be trying to have one on each end of town. These are very expensive signs. These people from out of town, which I'm amazed how many people can come from out of town. Do you guys go to LA and San Francisco too? But anyway, for the local people, you know, I took a drive the other night to see some of the other signs that we have, like the Gardik Farm, Gilroy Crossing. Because they made it sound like this sign is so big and large. They're about the same size. They have lights on and they shine all night. But they, obviously, they're not digital. They don't change. One thing I'd like to bring up about this sign, you have those people that have onsite signs throughout Gilroy, along the freeway. You got Costco, Denny's, and all those have big signs. Those are called onsite signs. Depending on how big their property is, their signs are equally can be to that size. What I like to point out is this sign gives a flexibility for small businesses. You wondered about how small businesses could advertise on a sign. Your business associations can come in. Your wineries could come in as a group. Your chamber could come in. And by the way, for some of you local people, Gilroy does make money on this sign. Okay? Yes, I'm getting a fee for rent. Gilroy gets a percentage of this. Gilroy gets money. Gilroy also gets to advertise on this sign if we still have the festival going or any of the things that Gilroy does. Some of the downtown people, some of those could advertise on this sign. For Gilroy, it's free, so there is some benefits. The business people, which you're going to try to hear from, this goes over. We can get people to come in off the freeway. And if you're bumper-to-bumper, by the way, out by my deal, you're going to read this sign. You're not, if you're flying by there 65 miles an hour, you'll probably only see one of them. But some of them, every afternoon, if you go out there, they're bumper-to-bumper. So the welcome to Gilroy and coming back and seeing these signs is going to benefit the small businesses. When they have something downtown, like a car show or something, it will bring people in from Salinas or Hollister, the ones that pass that. You know, the other things I like to mention, your car dealers, which I'm getting this information from the sign people, but... sign people, but as their sales increases by what I was told 10%, Gilroy gets a percentage of that. I have a tenant in the Old Orchard Supply. He looks at it that, you know, everybody that's on the freeway, they can put their, they can put signs on their building, like you see Costco and some of these. So, you know, his outfit, which is Arnhem Horse Motorsports, they sell motorcycles and stuff, he is really excited about this because this gives him a chance to be able to get an advertisement on the freeway. Second, secondly, he doesn't have to, I mean, he can buy for a month, he can buy for a week. You have a lot of local people, like if you just like the Brazilian restaurant that just opened, and if I was running that, I'd probably advertise for a month or two. You don't have that in other signs. And billboards, and I agree with people on billboards, these actually can take more billboards down. What you're gonna have here in a way is you have eight turns, eight second, eight turns on each side, so 16 turns, that give, give people a chance to advertise without having a billboard. And they don't have to be right on the freeway. I mean, I think there's a lot of real positives. You know, like you see the high schools both have digital signs. I mean, they're small, but they're informational. People look at them. You know, if they didn't work, I will guarantee you, people don't advertise. I'm a business person. You don't advertise and spend money where they don't work. That's for sure. Okay, thank you.
Hello again. Sean Marsiniak. I'm with Hanson Bridget on behalf of Outfront Media. I just wanted to follow up with some facts. You can hold me to three minutes. I'm gonna be short. So, nationwide, 70% of businesses that appear on billboards are local. In the Bay Area, it's about 64%. I sent in a letter this afternoon. I apologize for the lateness. Usually, we try to get things in a day, but we were late on getting some of the data. We would expect that businesses can see up to 20% more revenue when there are digital advertising signs in the vicinity. With 20%, what that would mean for the local economy is, I'm using a number, 5% to 20% to be conservative. You see 4.1 million to about 16.7 million. That would, you know, that's what increased sales would be for local business. Well, that's total business. And then if you, if you, you know, carve out the percentage for local, I haven't done that math. That's revenue to local businesses. That, of course, translates to sales tax. Looking at the city's budget and its sales tax figures, if you saw, if there were 20% more in revenues, there would be 20% more in tax roughly. And so, the city itself could expect to receive between about $760,000 to 3.1 million. And you can do, that's the indirect benefits. There's, of course, if this ordinance was passed, you would enter into a, an agreement with the sign company and also receive direct revenues. And what you do with that money is, is, is up to you. You know, it can go towards police, fire salary, city staff salaries, infrastructure. That's, that's your decision. So, I just wanted to, you know, I think last time you'd asked, you know, what's, what's the benefit of this sign? You know, those are the facts. Those are the numbers. We submitted a letter. It's documented with sources and authorities. I hope you had a chance to take a look, but I can appreciate we delivered it late. You know, please ask us any questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
There are no further public speakers.
There's a Jeff on my screen.
My apologies. Give me one second. Jeff McEwen.
Good evening. Jeff McEwen. I'm also with Outfront Media. And I just wanted to, like we reiterated the last time, is that we do focus on local sales for this community. 65-40 is our average for the Bay Area. We believe it's gonna be higher in Gilroy. And we make it affordable for everybody. And we can do a day, like I said, a day or a week or a month. The average is about four weeks on a buy. But we're flexible. And while space is available, we're very flexible on price. So, we'll be accommodating to all of the local people and all the local businesses. Also, I'd like to just thank Cindy for all of her efforts over the last couple of years that we worked with her. And keep in mind that staff is recommending that you approve the proposal for the ordinance change and for the sequel. And we'd like to have that move forward today. Thank you.
There are no further speakers.
Thank you. I'm gonna move to closed public hearing. Commissioners, disclosure of any ex parte communication. I see that there are none. All right, possible action. The floor is open to discussion or further questions?
Actually, I would like to thank you, all citizens and non-citizens, for sending letters, come up here and participate in a discussion that is close to your heart. We cannot do this without each one of you. So, please help us help you. Thank you.
I have a couple of just random questions. They kind of bounce all over the place. But I have, what is, there's a, an anticipated revenue for the City of Gilroy. What is that percentage? And, you know, per year, not like a 10-year overall percentage. And how does that relate to what part of that, what percentage of the revenue is, does it represent in the city's annual budget?
So, I want to be very clear that we are not considering a development agreement this evening, nor are we considering a sign application this evening. If the ordinance is approved by the City Council, then an applicant can apply for a sign permit. And that applicant would be subject to a development agreement. That development agreement would be reviewed by the city attorney. And it would set forth any revenue sharing. It could be a percentage of revenue. It could be upfront flat fee. It could be an annual fee. It could be, you know, any number of terms that would be negotiated in a development agreement that would have to be approved by the City Council.
And you, you spoke last time about best practices. You looked at different cities and best practices. Was this ever discussed in terms of what the revenue they generate from these types of, of billboards?
Yes. So, yes, we talked to the Outfront Media about the type of revenue that they would generally anticipate. But again, that is not part of our discussion this evening.
I have a question for perhaps the city attorney. I read in the packet that, for example, the development agreement could disallow advertisements for cannabis, which is currently prohibited in the city even though it is legal in the state. So, does the state law override city prohibition? And what about free speech? So, could, for example, a cannabis distributor in Hollister choose to advertise on this billboard? And would we be able to say no to that?
The answer to your question is yes, we would be able to say no. And in fact, there are kind of thorny potential free speech issues that arise with billboards. However, the single clear prohibition in state law is obscenity. That's clear. And there's a state law on that. With respect to any other thing that we may want to prohibit, such as political speech, cannabis, alcohol, or whatever kinds of ads, presumably in a development agreement, those, those provisions will be written in. And that would, and that would be enforceable. That's not subject to a free speech claim.
So, it's not something that would go into litigation or we would end up spending...
It should not go into litigation because it would be a matter of agreement.
So, I disagree. I disagree with you because the way this ordinance is written and what the City Council had, and Cindy, I know your leg is killing you. Please sit down if you feel, yeah, don't, don't feel like you have to stand. Sit, relax. I watched the City Council for a meeting where they asked staff to look into this. And they specifically had concerns about smoking, vaping, cannabis, prostitute, pornography, prostitution, and political ads. And I really take offense to the minimal requirements here that are put into this ordinance compared to other cities' ordinance, which I looked at. All it says is, nothing of obscene, indecent, or immoral character. And I, and it goes on. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I find great offense to that. This, these words, immoral, they were written before I was born in 1970. We can do better to clearly identify what we want and what we don't want to see on a billboard like this. Additionally, it's allowing all of the big advertising money, politicians, tobacco, cannabis. I mean, you, I will argue with you that is smoking immoral? That is specifically what the City Council had concerns about. And it's not addressed in this ordinance.
No, that's correct. And the reason it's not addressed, because as I said, under state law, the specific language referred to is that language about obscenity and immorality. However, the council is clear about things that should not be allowed. And by using an agreement with the applicant, with the billboard company, we can control that. For example, if you don't have an agreement, then it's difficult to prevent political speech.
So, what you're saying is...
Let me finish, please. Because there is, there is a presumption that people can do political speech. That's politics. However, by agreement, the expectation is that we in fact will prevent all of those kinds of categories that you just mentioned that the council would want to prevent. And that's why we would be doing it by agreement, to make sure that it's enforceable.
But that's not what other cities have done. They've clearly identified what can and can't be done. Basically, what this ordinance says is it says, if, if I, what I'm trying to say is, it's akin to saying, "I would like to rent my room out to someone. Once they move in, then we're gonna set up a lease agreement."
Well, the...
I mean, we are opening the door to, it's not that we are allow, it's not we're talking about changing our ordinances. We are opening our city up to a new business, a new type of business. That, that's why we're asking all these questions. It's different. We want to understand it. But this ordinance from 1970 that says immoral and obscene, where other cities have been able to clearly identify, we don't allow tobacco. We don't allow cannabis. We don't allow pornography. We don't allow adult. I mean, this is, this is very wide open. And then to say that we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna reevaluate this on every case-by-case basis, staff is already, you know, like, we're already understaffed. Staff already doesn't have, I mean, they have too much to do. And we're gonna say, "Oh, okay, staff. For every applicant that comes in, we have to have you spend your time." Rehashing this out when it's, we could have hashed it out the first time.
The ordinance will allow two billboards potentially. Each billboard has to obtain a permit. The permit goes through the Planning Commission and the council both. So, you get another shot whenever an application is filed. The ordinance also requires that each application will have an agreement with the city, which again, will go through the Planning Commission and the council. So, in my opinion at least, there are adequate controls. Ordinances can be written differently, and we can add additional issues to the ordinance. However, there are difficulties when you start legislating about different content of speech, as I'm sure you know. That, for example, as I mentioned, political speech. It's difficult to legislate that someone cannot put political speech in a public place. However, by permit and by agreement, we can do that. And that's why we've written the ordinance the way we did. And I think that the city will be fully protected. And you'll, and the Planning Commission will have a say in that as well, because both the permit and the agreement will also come to you.
I'm just saying that what I read from the other cities that we referenced, they have clearly identified what they don't want in there. And where ours has come practically completely wide open.
I just have one more question. And it is, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but I think you're the salesperson for the sign. And you spoke a moment about, yeah. So, last, oh, can I not ask? I'm sorry.
Chair would have to open the public hearing for this gentleman to speak.
Can we table it?
Yeah. I, yeah.
Any other questions?
No. I'd like to just give my perspective. I appreciate everybody coming here tonight and giving your opinions. I was a former business owner here in Gilroy quite a few years ago. And I know how important it is to bring business in your door. And I feel that if I was still a small business owner, I would probably do something like for a month or a few weeks or a couple of months. I believe it could bring in business to your, to your store. The car dealers bring in 2.5 million, I'm just rounding this off a year. If they got another 10% more business, that would bring a lot more revenue into the city. I know a lot of you have talked about, we're gonna lose our rural look, our country look. But something coming down the pipeline that's going to be coming before the city is soon is that there's going to be six-story apartment units being brought into this city that we can't really say no to. And to me, that's going to, our rural and our country living is, is when we have all these high-rise buildings here in town, which we already have one on 10th Street. We have some on, near the Safeway Store. And there's some being built now down on the corner of Santa Teresa and First Street. I just, I think this could be good for the city also because we have the sharks coming in. And we can draw people into the city by advertising that. And the, and the city will have, be able to advertise. I did talk to the person who promotes and manages the Poppy Jasper Film Festival. And she jumped at, she said this would be a really great thing to advertise her business. So, I'm just giving you a little my side from a business side, looking at, at this sign. So, that, that's just kind of my take on it.
Thank you.
When, back in the day, I think when you're a business owner, things they used to run in a different way. Because I'm certified, but you see Berkeley as a digital medium. And nowadays, it's all about digital media in a sense that is Facebook, Instagram. Look what a city council, Carol Mark, is doing on Facebook. She's bringing so much business, like, to the, to a local business because she's doing videos. That's nowadays, that's how we do business. Back in the day, it was a different story. It was like newspaper, you know, those big boards up there. But just to make it clear, that doesn't, it doesn't, it's not, doesn't work anymore. And it's cheaper. Digital market is cheaper. It's efficient. Right away, you can get reports. You can get, you can track where people come from. It's, the sky is like, you can go up in the skies, like, it's limited. I don't know how many options you can, you can do with a digital marketing. It's efficient and it's cheap. And that's how we do business nowadays.
I agree and disagree. I think, I think the marketing companies such as Outdoor, if they're gonna spend a million dollars, there, there must be people out there that see benefit in, in the billboard advertisement as well.
And that can help some small business.
You know, I, so, can I, can I just quote from the packet a little bit here? On page 204 and page 205 of the executive summary dated March 15th, it states, "Council will also need to consider that most of the advertisements on the electronic billboard would likely be those that are not actually located in Gilroy." This is what the city staff wrote in their executive summary. That's concerning to me. You know, I, I want to support the local businesses here. And I appreciate Mr. Orith and Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Campbell coming forth. I spoke with the chamber. They said they're not taking a position on this now. What I didn't hear from those that were supporting it, though, was I would spend the several thousand dollars a month in advertisement. I would spend the several thousand dollars a month in advertisement. And even though to Ms., um, Commissioner Lewis's point, you know, she would do it for, you know, a month or two months or something. You know, I don't know how many of these small businesses, Victoria Restaurant, you know, some of these, these local businesses that have, you know, $25,000 each year to spend on, on advertising on a billboard on 101. The other thing that this executive summary states on page 205, under the headline of benefits to auto dealerships, while the intent of allowing off-site signage in the city would be to primarily benefit the auto dealerships. So it's not really the intent of the local business. The attached questionnaire estimates that approximately six of eight advertisement spots would be sold to non-auto dealers. So I'm, I'm struggling with this. You know, uh, you know, I, I, I think that most of the businesses that are represented by Chamber, DBA, they're the small businesses, they're not the Verizon, the, you know, I, it's, the, the big companies that are typically on these. Um, and I don't know when, when I was told that 64% in the Bay Area is the local business. Is that a local car dealership? Or is that a local restaurant that is, you know, a, a small business that has been opened up? I struggle with this, okay? I see, um, the benefit to Verizon, to Coca-Cola, to things like that. I, I don't know that I see the benefit to some of the local small businesses that, um, that make up Gilroy.
And to build on that, what is the local business? Because we do have a Verizon here, right?
Correct. So that would be part of the 64%? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. And, and also too, um, you know, the opportunity to put up Amber Alerts and things like that. I, we already have a medium for that, um, and that's our mobile devices. So those are always on us. And we don't have to drive by the sign to see those. I'm not sure, um, how much of a value that really adds in the day of, of mobile devices. My concern is also, you know, I'll, when I first heard about it, I was like, ooh, that'd be really good for business. But after reading the report, I had a lot of questions. That, and that's all I really have to say about this topic. I have other questions too.
Thank you. Uh, this side of the room.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm, my, my take on this is that even if we agree that this has benefits, this is going to bring, um, extra business, it's going to generate money. In my mind, that doesn't necess- doesn't necessarily supersede the needs that are not business-related from all, like, the citizens, the residents that, that have contacted us. And so that, in, to condense all of this, in my mind, you know, I'm, I, I always make a list of the pros and the cons. And in the, in the pro column, there's like, oh, money to be made for, you know, certain set of individuals and some for the city. But on the, on the con side, we have all these environmental factors. We have light pollution, visual blight, the impact on wildlife, on the rest of the environment, distracting for the drivers, the safety aspects, the negative impact on, on wellness overall. And ultimately, where I come down on this is the, the opposition to the project from our residents was so overwhelming. I could not believe my, my phone was going off because these emails were coming in. And they were, as far as the proponents or the, the supportive emails, there wasn't a single one that was from, well, except for Mr. Colorado. But they, they were not residents. All the folks that talked to us that said, now, I've been a resident in Gilroy many, many years, they were all in opposition. So to me, that, that was, the, the balance was so off. And the fact that we have a currently prohibition, we, we have an ordinance that says no, means that the people that came before us on planning commission, city councils, th- thought that this was important not to have it. And also the folks that were, um, interested in what going forward, thought that this was not a good idea. That's why the, um, the ban or the, the ordinance against such signs is in the 2040 plan, which is forward-looking. So we are now being asked to basically over, overrule all of that for the singular benefit of, of generating some extra money. And to me, that's making the extra money, that's nice. But that should not be the be-all, end-all to all the issues that were brought up in opposition to the project.
Commissioner Montez.
So I, I'm thinking that our focus tonight is on zoning, right? And whether zoning is approved to change or not, then it comes back to, to us and to council to then figure out the development agreement, the permit process. And all of those issues, I think that whether it be in favor or against, are going to be addressed at that time. So we can talk ourselves until we're blue in the face about that.
I agree.
Until we know if the ordinance is going to be changed, or for we can decide how we want the permit and the development process to take place.
So for the sake of time, um, and in respect for everybody's time, for number five A, uh, any questions, comments, or concerns on the MND? Specifically, the MND.
So, uh, let me just make sure, there's a lot of information. So does the MND cover the, um-
The consultancy quo-
Right, 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 right. The 250, the, the .3 candles at 250 feet? Or is that in the ordinance part?
So the, the MND reviewed the draft ordinance before you and made their, um, analysis based on the, the standards in that ordinance. The MND also evaluated the, um, sign application on auto mall. Um, even though we're not considering that tonight.
Right, right.
And approval of the CQ document would not approve the sign. But it was evaluated since it all came in as one application.
Okay. So if I had a comment on that portion, um, is this the right time to comment on it?
Yes, you're deciding on the CQ document this evening.
Okay. Yes. So, um, thank you. So, uh, when I finished reading everything, I thought to myself, okay, these LEDs, they have a down tilt, they're focused down. You know, they're, they, they take the light meter measurement perpendicular to the face of the sign. But I don't live 75 feet up in the air. So what is these signs? What is the challenge really with these signs? And that is the glare and the scatter. And I, we know that technology, sorry, laws can't keep up with technology. And I feel like we are measuring, we, we say that this is fine, this is, they meet the requirements. But this is not really what we are, that's not, this is not really the concern about the sign. The 250 feet, um, light meter reading is not really the concern of the sign. The glare is. So we are taking, we're surfing like a steak to a vegetarian and saying, it's okay, it's grass-fed beef. Like, that's not, that's, that's not, vegetarians don't eat meat? So that's, it's not going to work out for them. So we, we are not, it's, this isn't a lighthouse we're looking at. This is, you know, because it's, we're focusing the light down. But yet we're measuring from, perpendicular from the sign. But studies show that glare is a problem with these signs. So I find that it's difficult, even though it may say, oh, it's within or below the standards that are set by the state. Those standards are not measuring the right concern about this, uh, product.
Any other discussion?
I, I don't know if this is part of it as well. But I just, um, think that especially, um, the, the footnotes that were attached to the letter from, um, I'm sorry, Dr. Paul Lyndham from Lick Observatory, that this is not comprehensive enough in terms of the impact that it could have, based on health, light pollution, things like that.
And, and I agree with you. And I feel like they don't, the CQ doesn't have to because they're not measuring the right thing. That, that's my-
It's just not comprehensive.
Yes.
Uh, the question you had earlier, would you like to bring it up? I, I can open-
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask, sure. I don't know if that's opening up a can of worms or-
If it helps with your analysis, I think that's what-
I, I would appreciate it, yes.
All right. Um, I'm going to open up to a public hearing and request Mr. John.
Thank you.
Jeff, sorry, Jeff.
Yeah.
There's a question from a commissioner for you.
Yes.
So last, um, meeting a couple of weeks ago, when you were here, we had asked you, you know, what the current pricing structure would be? And you just really didn't know. Were you able to look into that?
As I mentioned, the pricing structure changes based on the time of year, the occupancy of the sign, um, and the availability, uh, and, and the, and the actual person that you're working with. So there's no, we don't set a tu- you know, a price.
So how irrelevant then is, um, the information in our packet that's a couple of years old? Or relevant?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So in the packet, it quotes, um, that, um, for, um, small businesses, local businesses, for, for local businesses, it's about $2,000 a month. And for national businesses, um, it's about $3,000 to $3,500 a month. But that was from a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so when, uh, when this went to the city council back in 2021, there were some questions that were asked. And so, um, the answers were provided at that time.
Any more questions for? All right, I'm going to close public hearing. Any more discussion commissioners?
Do you just mean for the first por- portion, the, uh, negative mitigation?
Correct. Yes. Well, the floor is open for a motion. I'm going to make the motion that we accept the recommendation that the city council, based on the independent analysis, adopt the MND and find that the MND was completed in compliance with CQ. Sorry, city, yes, city staff. Based on its independent analysis, adopt the mitigated negative declaration and find that the MND was completed in compliance with the CQ. There is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment. And the MND reflects the city's independent judgment and analysis.
I second.
Roll call vote? And commissioners, just to remind you, we also have to vote on the tablets as well.
So if you'd like, I can also do the roll call vote and just vote on my end and not open it up to the monitors.
That works.
Commissioner Ellie?
No.
Commissioner Kushner?
No.
Commissioner Liangard?
No.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Montez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
No.
Chair Bundal?
Yes. The motion fails. Three, four.
So, uh, that means that for the second motion, you cannot approve, you cannot recommend approval because we've not approved the mitigated negative declaration. You can however, uh, entertain a motion for denial. Or you can-
I'm sorry, entertain a motion, but-
For denial of the actual changes to the ordinance. Because you can't recommend approval because you've determined that the environmental analysis is not adequate.
I move to recommend a denial. Do I read the whole thing?
But we would have to identify with prejudice or without prejudice?
The, um, two, two comments. Yes, it would be helpful to read the, um, read section B, accept denial as opposed to adopt. A, a denial, if it's not specified, is with prejudice. And if you want to do it without prejudice, to allow the applicant to reapply within a year, you could specify that. At the, on the assumption that the applicant will appeal to the city council, then the ultimate decision in that regard would be theirs anyway.
So after this motion is made, are we still able to have discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. After, yes, once the disc- motion is on the floor, the motion is subject to discussion.
Thank you.
I don't understand, again, can you explain the prejudice and non-prejudice? Do I need to include that in the motion?
If you simply move to deny, the default situation is that is deemed to be with prejudice. You don't have to say that. That's the normal case. If for some reason you feel that denial without prejudice, meaning they could reapply the same thing next week, you could say without prejudice. On the other, what I was trying to say is, I, on the assumption that they want to go to the city council and they will appeal your denial, it really doesn't matter.
Okay. So I move to deny the adoption, deny adopting-
May I suggest, may I suggest the wording would be recommending that the city council not adopt an ordinance?
I move recommending that the city council not adopt an ordinance, Z 1804, approving changes to section 30.37.30, prohibited signs, section 30.37.50, commercial and industrial districts, and section 30.37.51, freeway-oriented signs, and creating a new ordinance, article LV, electronic billboards.
And may I clarify one thing since I, I misspoke slightly? And that is that although you're recommending they not adopt, this is, under our code, a denial. And so it's a, it's, it's your final action, even though it's phrased as a not a recommendation. But it's deemed to be a denial. And then if it passes, then the applicant would have to appeal to the city council if they wish to do so. Okay? So you don't have to change the wording, I'm just clarifying for the record.
I second.
Vote please.
Uh, no, we have opportunity for discussion.
Sure.
Yes.
Which I think is important, um, with this. But I'll keep it short.
I, I would like to say, um, I, I have prepared draft reasons based on your comments at the last meeting. And I would recommend that your motion is very explicit in why you are denying the project. Because as I mentioned, if this is appealed, your explicit reasons for the denial will support the city council in making a decision.
So, uh, last time I had concerns, which I know you documented, I will just read through quickly my concerns I have now. I did discuss already that it does not cover, um, other concerns of the council had, that other cities were able to put into their ordinances regarding prohibi- prohibitive, um, advertising. There's no requirement for non-illumination. And other cities don't allow such a tall sign. Um, there's also concerns from the public that there are only two signs. Um, that if there, if this is approved, then more will come. And that is actually evidenced in the suggestion from the staff to approve possibly three signs rather than two. This, um, the, uh, the, um, billboard, we talked about a lot of litigation. And, um, I did find lots of litigation out there. But one of them was, uh, that Outfront Media is, um, hold on, I'm looking for my notes, bear with me, I'm trying to do this fast. Oh, um, so, uh, the city of Royal Oak has documentation that, uh, they have negotiated a settlement in this litigation, which arises out of the zoning board's appeal from November 14th, 2019, decision to deny the applicant from Outfront Media for two variances to allow the construction of a billboard on commercial property. So, um, this is a very litigious, um, situation for them. And I am concerned that if we do open our doors to, uh, and we change to this business model, that we might, staff might be very, very busy. Finally, um, it goes against our 2040 plan. And I did not, I, I have the whole listing of that from our 2040- I, I have the whole listing of that from our 2040 plan. No, I have a bunch more. Should I read them off real quick? Guiding principle two, preserving the historic character of Gilroy. Guiding principle. Oh, I didn't write down which one, but supportive balanced growth management strategy that protects productive agricultural lands and sensitive wildlife habitat, habitats. Guiding principle three, Gilroy retains a small town feel. LU four, encouraging the growth of development. And it goes on, I'll just read them off. LU four, LU four-two, LU five-one, LU eight-two, LU eight-three, LU eight-seven, LU eight-eleven, LU eight-thirteen, and M five-nine. And then finally, it also goes against our climate action plan, our interim climate action plan, where reduction of emissions, including streetlights, traffic lights, installing energy reducing daylight systems, encouraging, encouraging projects that are expected to reduce emissions significantly, a lights-out policy at night, promoting local, regional greenhouse business programs that reduces energy use. And we are supposed to be reducing light projects within, projections within the city. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I would just like to add that I, I made note of a number of these as well. But I, I go back to the general plan 2040 vision statement, which says, you know, to enhance the culturally rich community with a small town feel. And I, I cannot ignore the number of emails and the, and the comments from our community with regards to this. It also talks about land use goal eight, support growth and development that preserves and strengthens the city's historic small town character, provides and maintains safe, livable, and affordable neighborhoods, and creates beautiful places. You know, while in an attempt to justify this, you know, saying it would not be allowed in non-urbanized areas, it's still considered by many of the community members that have spoken to be an eyesore and blight. And I just, my concern is we have this general plan 2040 and certainly, you know, things need to be amended at time. This is a slippery slope. And one of the things that concerned me, you brought up, about the, what has been proposed is up to two signs, but there is the alternative of adding a third. And that concerns me because it just goes against the, what I'm reading in the general plan and the goals.
I think it's a valid concern, Kelly, because once you have approved two, what is going to stop the next applicant to come and say, well, you allow two, why, why can't I have one? You know, I do, what, what gives you the right to have this kind of a monopoly? Don't I have the right to make money and, and secure a prosperous environment for, for other people? So it's, it is a slippery slope and the same thing with, we, we, we also got, a lot of folks were sending in some of the experience of other communities. And I, I appreciated the folks from San Jose to come down and to just sort of dismiss that and say, well, they're from out of town, they lived through it though and currently living through it and, and fighting it. So I appreciate them sharing their experience with, with this exact topic. We received emails talking about Madison, Wisconsin just had a ban. And then they, the sign company sued them. The Court of Appeals slapped them down and said, no, we're, we're going to stick with it. And in their decision, they actually referenced the city of Austin case where same thing, the city was banning the sign. So I think one of the public comments was, you know, this is, this is happening all across the US that these, that there's bans on, on electronic billboards to start with. And even the ones where they have given it a shot, they're trying to roll back and, and actually eliminate them because they did not pan out the way it was expected. And are only defined that then they're involved in litigation for, you know, 10, 10, 15 years. Because with this other, and it was actually our, Mr. McKeown, thank you for your, for your letters. You had mentioned that there's a couple of billboards that went, electronic ones that went up in San Jose that were basically deemed illegal, they, they had never gotten the permits, but they went and erected them anyway. And again, their line of argumentation was that, well, we should have a right to also, you know, have, have a spot and, and make money. So the city and I think county are pursuing this. And, but in the meantime, the, the signs are up and, and time is clicking by and, and, you know, money is being made. And so I, I just think we, we would be opening the door to, to a lot of this kind of.
And this is also a private business that the showcase won't be private. It will be for everybody to see.
Thank you. There is no further discussion. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Ellie?
Uh, hold on, so a yes vote is for?
The denial.
The denial. Yes, I deny.
Commissioner Kushner?
Yes.
Commissioner Liangard?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
No.
Commissioner Montez?
No.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Bondal?
No. The motion passes four, three. Thank you, everybody, moving on to.
Nothing further to say, that concludes this item.
Thank you. Moved on to six point two, architectural and site review permit to amend Plaza Alium sign located at, on the property northeast corner of 10th and Chestnut. Application AS 22 dash 24. Craig?
Thank you, Chair Commissioners, give me just a moment to try to pull up my PowerPoint. So as, as mentioned on the agenda and by the chair, this is a request to consider an amendment to an existing sign program that's been approved for a project that's under development near the corner of 10th and Chestnut. Just to orient the public and the commissioners, this is a property near the fire, the fire station headquarters on Chestnut Street, where the old Chestnut Center used to be that was torn down several months ago. And it encompasses about six acres of property. The entire shopping center would encompass six acres of property. And there was an existing, there's an existing approval that approved some signage, one of them being a pylon sign oriented towards the freeway. And that's the subject of tonight's, tonight's request. So just to give you a little bit of background on what was approved, on the right-hand side of this line, you'll see what's currently approved for this shopping center. Seventy foot five, seventy-five foot tall sign, which at the, which currently is about the maximum, is the maximum you'd go under conventional zoning standards. And then they were granted an approval to have a larger than typical sign face of 720 square feet, where 330 square feet is the current standard code allowance. They got that approval under their planned unit development zoning. What the applicant is proposing to do is, is change the sign's style to one that has a shorter cabinet, but they are asking for an increase of height. And we'll explain that in, in, in a future slide here. So just to kind of give you some background, the existing sign program allows some changes to the normal standards. They're granted their own specific zoning standards. And one of those changes where they have two monument signs, one of them is taller than 14 feet. They have the pylon sign approved with 720 square feet of sign area. And the additional deviation that's requested is to increase the pylon sign height from 75 feet to 80 feet, so a five-foot increase. But with that, they would reduce the sign's square footage of the face as shown in the previous slide. So the applicant went out with their, with their team and, and put a, a boom up in the air with a, a sign fixture, fixture hanging under it to figure out where exactly the sign could be seen from the freeway. And in their study, they found that the tall sign that they actually got approved, no matter where they put it on the site, the bottom half of it just was not visible. So it wasn't effective, it made no sense to pursue that. So they, they basically came up with a couple of locations where they could see the sign from the freeway and determined the bottom point where you could see a sign and then sort of designed from that. And that's how they got to the request of the additional five feet. In order to get a sign area that they felt represented what they're previously approved and tried to, trying to achieve. The applicant, just to give you a sense of what's nearby, we had provided this exhibit showing you the, the tall sign, existing freeway oriented signs along the highway, how tall they are, and then the location of their site to just give you a sense of where they are in proximity to the freeway versus the others, as compared to other signs along the freeway. So they're a bit more distant, so the visual just height would diminish as you, as you look further away from the freeway.
Can you go back one slide, please? I was absorbing the right-hand side of the slide and I missed the left-hand side.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
This information, it is in, in.
Yeah, it's nice to see it, nice, big in color though.
Yep.
Will this be two-facing?
Yes, they're two-facing, yeah, dual-sided. So yeah, the left side is driving north, so it's the south-facing side of the sign. And then the right side is driving south, so the north-facing side of the sign. Okay. So the, this exhibit was showing the locations that the applicant, well, basically the distance from the freeway that this sign would have compared to other signs. And then also highlighting in blue where there's some significant tree growth and some limited areas of visibility. The applicant will go, go into a little bit more depth about their study, but this exhibit was provided to give you a sense of what they looked at when they went into the field to do an evaluation of this sign. And I thought I had another.
Excuse me, Craig?
Yeah.
Is the, the, the pin, the purple pin, is that where the sign is going to?
That's the site, the sign is going more adjacent to the property line. And I, I believe there's a, I don't know if I put that site, that exhibit in my packet, the site plan, it's in your packet, but I didn't, I didn't include it in my slides. I could probably pull it up and, and share that if you, if you, if you'd like that after I'm done with the presentation. So there were just limited areas of, of visibility. The applicant has some information that was in your packet. I apologize, that's not my sled program either. But basically what they found is when you exit from Leavesley going south, there's just a window of opportunity to see the sign, which is reflected in the pictures here. And then you lose that opportunity once you hit the tree growth again. And that, that tree row pretty much continues till you get to the off-ramp when you can then potentially see the sign again. And then heading north, there's existing buildings that, that more or less block the sign as you're going, as you're going north. So in terms of our analysis, you know, we looked at whether or not the current CEQA document adequately evaluated impacts associated with the, an increase in five feet of the sign. And looked at whether or not this would conflict with any general plan policies. And looked at whether or not this would conflict with the, or comply with the planned unit development criteria. And the primary policy that we identified was policy LU eight point seven. That talks about requiring signs to respect surrounding context. The sign design will not change. It is similar with other tall signage, so we felt that, that was satisfied. With respect to the planned unit development criteria, the applicable criteria is whether or not the design is compatible with the development and, and contributes or is compatible with the city image and the, the scale of the site or the development. We felt that those still were, were satisfied even with a five-foot taller sign. And therefore, we felt that the findings still remain valid for the original approval. As I mentioned, with respect to CEQA, there were no aesthetic impacts related to the tall pylon sign. The massing of the buildings was, was one of the things that were looked at. The signage was not identified as, as having any negative impact. So we don't feel that the incremental change of about a six to seven percent increase in height would have a material effect. So we don't feel that we need to reexamine the environmental document and it still applies to this, this request. So our recommendation tonight is to move this word to the city council, recommending that the existing environmental document is adequate for this project and then recommending that they approve the amendment to the sign program, proposed as AS 22 dash 24. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, the applicant's here as well and could provide more elaboration on, on their request.
When it, when it refers to the sign program, is that just specifically for that shopping center, right? This is not some overarching city program or something?
Just for this center.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And Alium is the name of the, the new name of the shopping center, right?
Yes, Plaza Alium is, is the new name for the plaza center, yes.
Thank you.
And I, I think also, at least for me to help, when I'm driving and when I see those kind of signs, it helped me even like to make a maneuver like faster, like if I can see sooner. It's not, it's something that, you know, sometimes like, for example, just happened two days ago. I was passing by, oh, there is a target there, you know, I need to go to the target. So it's something that it doesn't, you know, pull my eyes out of the road. But also I think in a way, if it's more visible, it brings more business to that plaza. And I think it's also safe and maybe, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but I think in a, I feel if I see sooner, it's, you know, it can kind of do a maneuver and try to go there sooner, so, yeah.
Well, I want to commend you on your, on your slide situation. That was really nice, that really brings the point home.
Very good, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. And that is, so I, not sure, I didn't write it down, but I thought that in Cindy's slide deck, she said that the, the height, the 65 feet, did they already have, uh, when it was approved, did they already have, I keep wanting to say ordinance and that's not, I mean, you know, an exception to go a little higher, okay.
Yes.
So is 65 feet the normal?
65 feet is typical, you can go up to 75 feet with certain exceptions for shopping centers.
Okay, okay.
Anything taller than that would be part of a, an amendment.
I'm very impressed with the information provided. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I'm going to open it up for a public hearing. Any public?
There are no public speakers.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. Commissioners, a disclosure of ex parte communication. I see that there are none. The floor is open for discussion or motion.
I'm happy to make a motion. I move that we recommend that the city council, based on its independent analysis, determine pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section 15162, that the proposed amendment to the approved sign program is adequately assessed by the mitigated negative declaration, the number adopted for the commercial development project on September 2021, and that no subsequent environmental review shall be required.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ellie?
Yes.
Commissioner Liangard?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Montez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Kushner?
Yes.
And Chair Bondal?
Yes. That passes seven, zero. All right, I will make a motion that we adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the proposed sign program amendment AS 22 dash 24.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ellie?
Yes.
Commissioner Liangard?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Montez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes.
Commissioner Kushner, sorry, Commissioner Kushner?
Yes.
Chair Bondal?
Yes, that passes seven, zero as well, thank you very much. New business? Chair, anything, no? All right. Informational items, the 2023 Planning Commission meeting schedule. I'm sure everyone saw that, it was in the packet, I think the very last page. Pretty standard. First Thursday of the month is our regular hearing and the third Thursday of planning, special planning hearing if needed. and the third Thursday of planning, special planning hearing if needed. Questions? All right. Planning Division staff report.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. You saw the email last week, just remind you, we shared the information about the League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy. So please reach out to our team if you would like to join that training so that we can work out, you know, some of the reservation travel details with you. That's it, thank you.
All right, City Attorney report?
No report.
Very good, thank you, everybody. I'm going to adjourn the meeting to March 22nd, 2023, at 6:00 PM. March 2nd, 2023, at 6:00 PM.